Nice, you go out to some parts and other towns look shabby and the amount of people and amount of space is the same.
Yeah, yeah, design is critical.
Anybody else? Title V update.
Yeah. Back in April two thousand thirteen, we discussed the type of licensing that the village would like to see in this update. The last time this code was updated was about nineteen eighty-eight. It's all part of the codification that was here before, that started, I guess, back in two thousand seven, two thousand eight. So we've taken this opportunity to kind of update our entire licensing chapter. And we did it under a theory of what the direction was at the time was basically, you told me, keep it simple, stupid. Right? Keep it very business friendly, but at the same time protect our interest going forward and to be able to license and make sure that everything is safe, but not to hinder or over-licensing anything. And that's what we've done.
Codification.
What's the codification? We went, literally on the head about over thirty or something different kinds of licenses on the books. And probably what's been an effect of maybe five or six that we've been doing practically. So I worked very closely with charity and Mark and the chief, try to get all that and to put in the administrative needs as well into this code. And I highlighted in the memo a couple of simple, a couple of the bigger areas that we tried to keep it relatively simple. But this is meant to be like an umbrella overarching, anybody doing business in the village should have a license. It doesn't have to be a large license fee or anything, do whatever we determine. But we want to know, some information, we want to know who's doing business in the town for community development reasons. We want to know who their alarm company is or who the person, the contact person is for safety reasons. And we want to make sure that anybody that actually physically has a place in town has a safe business that I can walk into or you can walk into, and that's where March role comes in. So we need to know who's doing what in the town, and that's really all it is, it's a registration. We're not putting too many restrictions on general business license or anything that's onerous to a business owner. Some of the bigger changes to this section, and they're not really that big changes. The old code allowed the mayor to hear a revocation hearing in case someone did something on their license or did some illegal activity, for example, homicide powers. It's one that I prosecuted numerous times. Sometimes they're not just homicide powers, okay, and you get arrested out of there.
Are those legal?
They're not legal. And then you want to take away, you want to take away the ability to, for them to conduct an illegal business there. Well, we go through a revocation hearing. Under the old code, the mayor had it authority. All we did now was just kind of beat that up, explain it, and add it in more of a way that we do the liquor licensing hearings as well. As far as the fees, I wish, you know, everybody can kind of figure out what the fees are, but that's more of a policy decision than it is for me to discuss. That's really the main focus is the overall goal. Does anybody have any questions about that kind of stuff before we go on to anything else?
No, and the same thing about the fee structure, we're going to adjust the fee structure in that time for, we'll have to do it before the budget or not.
Well, yeah.
Now's the time, we'll do that.
Yeah, another time, George will have to draft.
We'll have the new fee structure table here.
Just throw in the budget next week to.
So, just so you know though, before we move on, that is a change in practice for the village. We have not in the past licensed all businesses. We've only licensed businesses that are not otherwise licensed by the state.
And that's a practice, not what's in your law, okay? If you're doing business and it even says you have a physical location, then you license it. And for the reasons I stated why, it is a good idea to make sure it's like.
It is, we all agree.
I thought if you were licensed by the state, nope.
Okay, for an example, if I'm a plumber and I don't have a physical structure here, you can't require me to have a license, okay? Because you're a municipality or you're not the same level as the state. If I have a physical structure here and I can walk in, somebody can walk in, you're licensing the structure. You're not telling them how to commit, how do you do plumbing? You're not telling them you have to use this certain.
You're not licensing their profession.
You're not licensing the profession, exactly. Same thing with lawyers, real estate agents, all that. What you are licensing is making sure that you know who's in town and that the facility, that the physical structure is safe. And there's case law that says you can absolutely do that.
What about people that are operating on their homes?
Because they're home occupations and we currently license those. I would guess that probably we're only licensing maybe twenty-five percent of the home occupations that are out there. You know, most people don't know they need a home occupation license, but technically to have one under our current practice, because we have certain kinds of uses that are allowed as home occupations and other ones that aren't. And unless they apply to the license, how would we know what we're doing, you know?
Besides.
Right.
But that is a good point, home licensing is one of those, if I'm working, if I'm working as a lawyer out of my bedroom and no one's allowed to come in, I'd argue with you that you're not allowed the license. I'm sorry, that you're not allowed the license.
Your living room.
My living room. So then, if you're arguing that you're trying to license by practice, you're trying to license by practice. But if people are coming in or people are allowed to walk in and meet with me or something as part of a business, it's a home business, it's a home license. We need to know that it's the same structure we're going into, that it's properly laid out, that storage, like a storage area is some of the stuff to look at. And then use that as basically, it's basically our tool to make sure that everything is going on and being safe there, so. Probably we should skip liquor and tobacco for now and come back to that at the end, to probably the biggest ones. So the other, the other different levels of licensing that we put into this ordinance are things that require a little bit expertise, okay? Because of the nature of the village, and we're allowed to do that for the business. So we're not, again, no plumbers, no real estate agents, no attorneys, but restaurants, for example. We have an IGA with the Cook County Department of Health, they come in and they do inspections, but under our codes. So that's indicated in here, this is really not that much, not significantly different. This version is not significantly different than what was in the original version and what we currently practice. There will be some changes to this code, I had communications with the county and talked to them about it. There's been some changes, just basically the numbering of the state standards. Nothing that's going to change the policy or anything like that, just the proper references will be put in there. But again, these are things that we already, that we are already doing, that we already have a relationship with the county and they're coming in and forcing it. Because of health reasons, I mean, like you said, if they apologize, they're just.
Do they, in their, in your sanitation inspection, do they do, because a lot of the establishments are using the grease traps, are they checking the grease traps, is that part of our agreement, can we, can we put that in?
We have a different.
We have our own.
We have our own.
We have our own, I knew that, but I mean, because they do inspect it sometimes, so I was wondering if we could incorporate that with theirs too.
It's a different standard, I mean, they're more interested in the actual health.
The health.
That's more of a building and cleanliness type of thing, but not as you consume the food, but as you, as you, you don't dirty the property.
It's more of a local thing because of our own village sewers.
Right, but some of the businesses have in-house infills, so the grease traps inside rather than on the outside?
Those still goes in the same sewer.
For health reasons, well, I'm assuming the inspector would catch it, if it was an unhealthy environment with that grease trap, it would be documented.
If Philly saw something out of the ordinary, he's never asked to take off the cover.
Okay, right, but I'm assuming if there's grease all over the town where you prepare, that's, that should be a health violation.
Yeah.
That way, that's charging in the sewer. Raffles, one of the things that we talked about, we've regulated raffles in the past. I believe we still actually have an active license, but we probably, charity is recommending that we actually remove this. That's not necessary. The state doesn't require us to, the state has its own standards, we follow those standards. That area is licensing, but it's a staff etiquette. We will remove that. Alright, so solicitation, what I've done is I've broken down solicitation into two different forms. As you have probably remembered, that last year, there was a state statute that required all municipalities to now and perform through a solicitation public way called fill the boot ordinance, fill the boot statute. Where we couldn't just say no, this is what they gave the standards. Those have been incorporated into this section, including the most recent standard which gives the chief. If I want to come in and say, I want to, I want to go to eighty-three man and I want to solicit there. And the chief feels that that is not a safe place. Now, under state statute, require that applicant to provide three other locations and choose one of us. That's all now up to date, this is the regular law, all updated. Door-to-door is essentially the same, the minor fee to those that are going door-to-door. Charity, solicitation, charitable solicitation, sorry. Are not, are, we, I put it there, free waiver, the policy logic is consistent with what we've done for that. Again, it gives the right to village presidents to say, I don't want solicitation here, go away. Or allowing the mods registered solicitors to come here. And if anybody is going door-to-door and trying to sell something without registration, please, just stay decided.
So let's just prove this public license.
They incorporate, right, exactly, we just kind of merge everything together.
So they have to apply to the police, they have to apply to the court?
I put, the way this solicitation for the public way is through by state statute. Door-to-door solicitation could be either one, probably makes sense to keep everything to the chief. They're the ones that are going to look at that. Not only charity has a problem with that.
No, currently we do, we do head to head, but we're fine.
If there's soliciting on the corner in the traffic, do they have to have insurance?
Yes, yeah, there is, there's a state mandate for a certain level of insurance, which requires them to show any part of it.
So I was collecting from Mr. Corey, one of my buddies, and he got it by a car.
Yeah, and there's safety precautions, there's a word of ass to be held about. So there's now the actual standard of how you can do it. What used, used to the way we would say yes or no, just say no if you didn't want it. Now you can't do that. You have to follow the lines of standards and that, we have to allow everyone a consent before.
How many, how many people come in a month?
For a second, or? I guess probably the month of May is almost filled right now, June is the first thing. I was, my officer, not as much as I have, and I spent probably almost every year. And they're the same ones every year, they get the same.
And then what about door-to-door solicitation, what do you, what do you have, what have you done there, what do you think?
Once they get busted, they usually don't come back and you know why.
Yeah, we don't, you don't get a lot that actually is going to be a process.
Did you say handful or?
Because he's going to be whining to me tomorrow, okay, and he's going to be overworked, that's what I'm getting at.
Well, Donna's handling it now, so I mean, you know, given addition all the other things she does, so it can't be.
I think there are very few that actually came in and got the license though.
Okay, but so they come in, they go to the chief, they get a license, are you, will you be handing them something so presidents don't have to?
No, we don't.
No, if you did, if they were issued through his department, they would, my department currently does it, yes.
Okay, so if I came to my door and selling a magazine, I can say, hey, do you have a license?
Yeah, carry with them.
So they have to show it.
But my understanding is if you have something on your door that says no solicitors, then they can't go there.
They won't even go in the door, but or if you say, we're not, we can say we're not registered solicitation only, and they can say, here's my, my badge.
Right.
One, two, you know, you have three different things. Everybody, those that are registered, will not legally, and those that don't. Then they know what you're always. And just so we're clear on the door-to-door solicitation, that comes with essentially someone trying to sell you something, the door-to-door vacuum cleaner. It is not and cannot be aimed at religious types of communication. I'm joined by religion.
That was a nice question. Or door hangers, where they're just going.
Or door hangers, or door hangers, right, it's knocking on the door and asking you to actually buy something from me. Okay, First Amendment will not allow any kind of regulation for some, for, the most famous is obviously the Joel Williams that come door-to-door hand you a pamphlet and say, whatever you want to say. Has your question?
Well, except we still say Sunday, do we want to say when or any day we pick?
For what?
It says you can't do it during the night, noon, noon, on any weekday or anytime on a Sunday or on a state national holiday.
But that is up to you then.
That's what I'm saying, I'm asking, I'm sure we'd be better off just.
Those are your current standards now.
Whatever we decide to make it. Leave it open-ended, we could change it, it could be Saturday, it could be Friday, I don't know. What the hell?
Don't laugh chief, that happened to you.
I was just looking for a missing.
What, what good could come of that?
It can be changed, I mean, there's no.
Right now, with the kids who come around sun, give the athletic tournaments on the weekend, are you leaving, is that true?
I, they would be if they're coming out of the sun.
At the door. I don't know what we do on that.
Do we want to discuss that further or do we want to figure that out in between?
Just figure it out between.
Okay. Taxi cabs, the reason taxi cabs are in here and they were licensed but never used, they're on the books. There's a new company that's been going around called Uber, where you can call the not licensed cab driver.
Just happen to have it.
Yeah, exactly, and it's essentially, it's essentially the chief on his, you know, on his off day, come by, giving you a ride for a couple bucks.
I never saw the chief, like a jetty or. White shares.
It really is. And one of the, one of the reasons why I suggest having this in here is because of the insurance requirements, that we should be open to anybody that is going to act as a delivery service or a cab service. We wanted to make sure that whoever's going to be doing that kind of work, whether you call yourself checker or something else, the individual drivers do have the proper credentials to do this. And I'm talking about CDL license, not my insurance. So, without that license, we wouldn't, we'd have a very difficult time to regulate that. And no one's going to come forward and application, but when you catch them doing it, is when you'll be able to issue a citation.
Okay.
Marco, you.
Chief, Marco the chief.
Chief.
So when you see a taxi over there, you gotta arrest them the first time in order to find out if they're covered? You have to arrest them the first time in order to find out if they have.
Probably very well.
Well, you have to issue a citation. Whatever the probable cause of stopping them is, they might not be licensed, what would you stop them? You see, you pick up a fare. So like American taxis in the driveway in my neighborhood yesterday, you could stop them and just ask?
I mean, I'm guessing they dropping off.
He was picking somebody up.
No, no, American taxi essentially should be, if they're coming in here, if they're being called from somewhere else, they should be licensed to pick somebody up in the village.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
So how do you know who's going to come? You have to throw an all points out, you know, anybody who's going to come in our town needs to be licensed, how would you know you got them unless you go and stop them?
Right, and that's essentially what's going to happen, I mean, you can put on your books all you want and you can put there, if there's a taxi cab license we've had on the books since nineteen eighty-eight, and I know we don't issue, we've never issued one.
Well, notify the cab company.
What's that?
How about notifying the cab company?
We should, absolutely, we can tell them, we can tell the major cab.
How many other towns or villages have that, have that ordinance outside of the city of Chicago?
Outside the city, a handful, it's half and half right now, there's a couple of places that have it, and a lot is because of Uber.
There's eighty-one other communities in the Sosa County area.
Well, I'm sorry, I represent, I have three communities that do it and then five, four that don't.
But Buffalo grows close to O'Hare.
Right, so.
So then should they do what Matt does, saying? What's the other one?
Uh, countryside.
Okay, so closer midway that way. I mean, I can see, I don't see, I actually don't see it being, I mean, even with the Uber and everything being out there. It's not.
And we can take it out.
I'd take it out, that's, I see that, even being unenforceable.
You could stop them anyway to see if they have insurance.
Well, you gotta, you have a probable cause to stop them. You can't just pull somebody over.
So what would be the probable cause of stopping them to find out if they're licensed?
Just find out their license, you know, he'll, he'll know.
Or like he says, we're picking up.
Okay.
But if, when we can take it out, it may be.
I don't think that's a.
Take it out, take it out.
Moving right along.
Moving right along. Permits required for other certain occupations, there's a list of, a couple of specific occupations that have an additional kind of element to them again for regulations, amusement and special events. Combine the two, amusements being, you know, places that are movie theaters and things like that, we define, they'll have a little bit of extra regulations. But then special events is really the big one. We do, and charity presented, I think, last town meeting, some, some of the changes to the special events, those have been incorporated in there. We think it's all properly put in licensing, we want to have some timeframe, when we're going to have these things going, some standards for them and certain requirements. And it's not, again, nominal fee is fine, it's just we need to know what's going on, police need to know what's going on. Food delivery vehicles, I mean, read here, it's essentially the ice cream truck, it's very similar to, because there's food being served. It's not a pizza delivery truck or pizza delivery car, which is, charity said, is what it reads like, so we changed it a little bit, but it's the ice cream truck. They actually serve the food from there. Coin-operated amusement devices, we've had that forever, this does not include video gaming. Video gaming is exempt from this, but, you know, anybody, the arcades and, especially with some of the projects that we might have going on here in the village. Junk dealers, junk dealers are in there specifically for two different reasons, one is property maintenance issue, but we also want to know who is receiving, if there's, you know, they're receiving stolen goods, we want to know what those goods are. We only have one junk dealer in town, he was annexed into the village later, so has never gotten a license for it, but this could be a good start to kind of promote that. Property maintenance code will apply regardless of this license, so if at any point that we feel that there's something on that property that is not on the up and off, then we can go ahead and do an investigation and see what the problem is. But I think it's pertinent for having, especially with the nature of what a junk dealer does. And the same is for consignment stores, consignment stores is not necessarily goodwill, goodwill, you receive a donation. Consignment stores, I'm selling you something, you're going to resell that. We'd want to know, similarly cash revoked, we want to know if that's a stolen good or not. And this requirement will be a little bit extra, it requires, they give the list to the chief of materials that they've received during the day that they're going to resell later, and the chief will be able to then run, do a check and see, make sure that none of them is being stolen stolen.
Like a pawn shop where you.
Like a pawn shop, the only thing is you're not pawning anything, so.
Yeah, you have to keep a record.
Right, you have to keep a record, that's the whole, we're taking the pawn shop, record requirements, and bringing this consignment, this consignment store. Landscape waste haulers, by state statute, we can't charge a fee, we can only charge, we can only basically have a registration, but again, it lets us know who's in town and what they're doing. I know building departments in favor of having this, we already have it, we've had it for a while now. Bed and breakfasts and hotels, it's just a little extra something that we have because there's some certain regulations with people staying overnight. This is one of those things we've had on the books, I don't know that we need it or don't need it. It doesn't affect zoning, so I'm not worried about having a bed and breakfast on the way shouldn't. But we'd probably want to know who is licensed.
Don't we already have those part of the sick, the old singer mansion?
We don't license them. The zoning has regulations on where bed and breakfasts are allowed and what constitutes a bed and breakfast, but we don't license them.
Is that some marijuana, we can't license, can't, if you're not licensed, you have to. Fake fishing, fake fishing. We're allowed to do reasonable zoning restrictions for that. We're not allowed to license the actual activities, that's the same way, the same way that you're not allowed to license real estate agents and attorneys. What's in? Well, we don't license private supply. But they, but, but they would have to get a general business license. If you come in and say, I have a physical location here, you come in, I need a general business license. Hotels and bed and breakfasts, I don't know if we want to keep that in, again, that was something that was in the old code, but probably that. And then solid waste and recycling collection service, we have a franchise agreement only for residential. We do have certain regulations by the way, but this again, we need to make sure that we know who's coming in doing collection, garbage collection, make sure that they're at the right times, you know, on a long night, picking up garbage, things like that. And getting nominal license fee would be associated with art, geolia, or some waste. But again, I think it's still a good idea, it is only partial, because it does not attract residential, we have a franchise. We could have a franchise for commercial, but the board has decided. Contract. Contractors, the same contractor license has been there for forever, that part still. Sidewalk displays, it's a little different, after talking to charity about this, sidewalk displays, we had a license for sidewalk displays on the books for a long time, I don't think we, charity says we've never even issued a permit.
We don't have any sidewalk display permit or license.
So, it's not, it's not necessarily something that we see as a problem in the village. We think that, wow, if you're going to have a sidewalk display, that's fine, you don't have to come in and get a permit, but you do have to file certain regulations. And we have the regulations in here.
It's in here, but it's the same way we do like window signs in the zoning district, you can't come in and report for some of the windows with signs. But you don't actually come in for them, it's just that if there's a violation, we have standards on it.
And then because this is public, which is usually made on a public way, we want to create a. I'm in sidewalk display. Five twenty. Alright, so now we're in the, we're at the last sidewalk display. An outdoor diner, this is, we did a major overhaul of the ordinance back in two thousand ten, two thousand eleven. Since that time, with direction from the mayor and working with charity, charity and I come up with, charity came up with some significant language changes that allow for a little bit more use. You don't have to have a special barrier, physical barrier anywhere, you have to have, you know, an area. It can be a velvet rope, it can be just some sort of marking that you know that this is your sidewalk area. And you can't take alcohol outside of that or food out of it. Before it was only food and alcohol, or food only, and then you had to pay alcohol aside, but now we're allowing, if you want to have a bear out there without being served food, you're allowed to have that as well. It's still for liquor license holders and still for essentially those types of, those types of places in the property rental industry.
This is just to do with these cafes and stuff, only because I see it more and more, and only because you brought up insurance issues before. What about these cafes and or outdoor or indoor that allow dogs, other than what do you call them?
Service dogs.
Service dogs. I mean, should we know that they're going to do this, should they have some other type of insurance in case they bite somebody when they're walking down the sidewalk or?
Well, then, insurance would be covered, it would, it would be covered the same way it would be covered on a homeowner's, if your dog bit somebody, but I don't know that we allow it to begin with under our health standards. I can double check that to make sure that we, I'll double check.
More and more places are letting them in. I'm not dating that myself, but.
Are you sure you don't mean tigers? That's a lot more.
Yeah. I'm on dogs.
Are you four, four?
Donna will kill me for saying it, because they take your dog everywhere, but I mean, I don't want, I personally don't like it, and if you got one that's, you know, growling at you, I don't like that at all, I don't want to worry about.
I have to say though, in downtown districts, it's pretty common to allow dogs in.
I'm not saying they shouldn't be allowed, I just want to make sure if I can fit their cover.
Yes, by a dog, yes, tigers, no.
But don't we have a slave drag?
Don't we have a dog?
An ordinance for when we have like keep it tight days where there's no dogs, no skateboards, no, right?
Or special events.
Special events, yeah.
Well, yeah, we're changing the special events, it's a little different now. Special events are different.
They've been covered already with our.
Special events, we take the street, we take sidewalk use, and it's right, this is the everyday opportunity. This is, uh, Tam House, right, Tam House has the outdoor seating area, it's those types, you know, front street.
Well, the, well, Tam House is private property.
But it's similar, it's the same thing though, just because it's on private property.
And you're walking right next to it, you know, and you get an aggressive dog there, I don't know.
So, Tracy Stiglen raises a good point, he says because it's on private property, if you're on private property, these standards still apply. You have to come in for a special use, and these standards still apply. If you want to come onto our sidewalk, then you also have to, you have to have, there's additional standards, which include insurance requirements to show that you're going to cover the village because the village owns that property. And the village is going to be named an additional street.
Sure.
So if your dog bites somebody while you're on the public.
We're trying to help them out by letting them expand out to some other public ways, so.
That's exactly, that's exactly the point of that, so, but I think those are all what we wanted. So back to the liquor and, liquor and tobacco are really combined. Tobacco is your same stand, the same that you've had before, except now it falls under the Liquor Control Act, and then the Liquor Control Commissioner, so it's just the mayor. So there's those, those set of standards now applied. Liquor licensing, I raised in the memo, the biggest change that we're recommending is payment at one time a year for liquor license. Right now, we split it half and half between May first and November first. It is an additional burden on staff that is probably unnecessary.
Yeah, why don't we do that?
We tried it just this past year, Donna filled me in on that, that this past year when we implemented New World, we sent them out the full bill at the beginning of the year, and almost everybody just paid it, but then everybody that just didn't want to, we just let do it half and half, so.
I'm sure Chris will not tolerate that next year.
Right, exactly, so. Right, exactly. So administratively moving forward, it's going to be much simpler if we just do it all upfront at the start of the year. And then, if there's some sort of economic hardship, you know, maybe there's a, something we can put in place to allow.
Yeah, but it can always apply to the liquor control commissioner. So what I, what I do recommend is that if, if you want a license and you want to come in for your first initial application before November first, you pay the full fee of attack. If you come in after November first, you're at the sadistic ones, we could give a break if you want to have the license, license fee for that initially here. And then you pay your renewal fee on May first. Your full, your full renewal fee. So that will take, put some money upfront. Everybody will pay upfront, they'll be done with the license problem, and the village's staff will have to issue two sets of letters and two sets of receipts. And I'll, I'll make those changes. They're not in the current version.
And then I'm going to recommend going with what Linda Mollard put together by doing the study of all the surrounding communities and where we're at, since we were the lowest. Just taking the average. We don't want to be the highest, we don't want to be the lowest, but we'd be right in the middle. So, and up those fees to that, to that, you know.
Yeah, we'll change the fees.
So, that'll actually add that. You send that to Chris, so I just got you forty thousand dollars more for next year.
We changed the, I changed the way the format is, and it's just formatting the way the number of licenses are now shown in the code. Before, they were actually, you know, one license for each separate license. I just created a chart. So you're, the only reason I bring this up because now when we have, when we add a license or take away a license, it'll look different than what it has in the past, but it'll be much easier. It'll be much simpler for, for me and Linda going forward, and everybody to realize how many licenses are really out there. Change in personnel, this is one that Linda insisted I put in here. In a way, she hurt me, she did that. Anytime that we change, anytime that these places change the manager, they don't tell us. So if Target Manager leaves, he's going to have a liquor license. Somebody comes in, they're the person that's responsible under the license. They need to give us notification, otherwise they can be helped by...
And be fingerprinted.
And, yeah, oh yeah, they have to, they have to pass all the criteria. So if new ones coming in, they have to be fingerprinted. If they don't pass, then they can't be the manager there or have a liquor, or have a liquor license. The age-related regulations are essentially the same. I did modify them a little bit.